Hello and welcome back to another episode of That's So Auburn. I'm Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, and I'm really looking forward to today's episode, or should I say, episodes. Over the next three podcasts, we're going to dive deep into conversation with our city council members, what got them into politics, what drives their day to day, the best and worst parts of their jobs, and so much more. We're beginning with Deputy Mayor Cheryl Rakes and Councilmember Clinton Taylor, and just a little bit about them before we begin. Deputy Mayor Rakes has lived in Auburn since 1960, when her family moved from Bellingham because her father got a job at the fire department here in Auburn. He retired from there in 1980 as a captain. And Deputy Mayor Rakes attended Auburn schools, just like I did, and graduated in 1973, a little bit before me, but not a lot. She then enrolled in Mr. Lee's Beauty School and NAP School of Business and took a few classes at Green River then Community College. Cheryl has been serving the Auburn community as Executive Director of the Downtown Auburn Cooperative since 2019, a position she loves as she works directly with small businesses. During the December 16th council meeting, she was elected by her fellow council members to a one-year term as Deputy Mayor. And Cheryl has been on the council since early 2023. And Councilmember Clinton Taylor is the founder and Executive Director of a financial education nonprofit, serving low-income BIPOC youth and young adults across the Puget Sound. He's a U.S. Army Desert Storm veteran. He holds degrees in human development, organizational leadership, and nonprofit leadership. He serves on the Board of Jump Start Washington Coalition and the Washington State Partnership on Juvenile Justice, with prior roles in organizations like the Auburn Public School Foundation and Better People. As a 13-year Auburn resident, Clinton pastors a local non-denominational church and enjoys family time or cheering for, I don't know if I can say these, the L.A. Rams and the Oregon Ducks. Clinton, we're gonna have words, I'm afraid. Clinton joined our council a year ago in 2024. And of course, there's a whole lot more to be said about each of them, which is why I can't wait to dive into our conversation. Welcome, council members. It's really good to have you on the show with us today, so thank you.
Thank you for having us on.
So, I know podcasts and videos can be a bit daunting, but I promise you, we are going to have some fun today. Everybody in their fun mode?
Yep.
All right, well, here we go. So, let's start at the beginning. Why did each of you get into politics? What led you to run for Auburn City Council? So, I'll share mine. I was a volunteer in Auburn most of my life. If there was a volunteer activity, I was going to be part of it. And I had a mentor, whose name was Jeannie Barber, who was on the Auburn City Council. And midterm, she had decided that it was time for her to retire and move back to Texas with her sons. And I got a call saying, "We're going to open this up. I want you to apply." And so Cheryl, you had a similar process. You and I, there was nobody in between us that was appointed to council. So, I was appointed back in 2003, and you were appointed in 2023.
Yes.
So, we have that in common, and I think we probably have more than that in common. I love to give back to the community. I have always had a passion for politics, although I will be honest with you, I never thought that I would be in politics. I was just always fascinated by what happened. But we'll tell you, I think local politics is where everything happens. A majority of the things happen so close to home. So Cheryl, we'll start with you, since you're the Deputy Mayor. What got you involved in politics? What led you to apply for and then run for the Auburn City Council?
Well, I will tell you, it all started back when I retired. I retired from the medical field.
You failed in retirement. I just wanted to tell you that right now.
I totally failed in retirement. So, my kids opened Braille Hop and Brewery, and they asked me to come help do coffee in the mornings. So, I thought, okay, that will be fun. That led to one of our city employees, Josh Arnt, telling me that I needed to get involved with the Downtown Auburn Cooperative. And I thought about it for a while, and most of my childhood, like yours, was doing some kind of community service. I mean, my dad was very big into community service. So, I got involved with the Downtown Auburn Cooperative. I took over in 2019, so I'm the Executive Director of that. When a position came up to the appointed position, when Chris Sterns left his spot, I had many people come to me and say, "Oh Cheryl, you really should run for council." Politics was never in my wheelhouse, never did I even think about running for politics. But after talking to several people, and I thought, okay, maybe I could do more help for the community. So, I went ahead and applied and got that election, and then had to turn right around and do an election, or got that appointment, then had to turn right around and do an election, which I didn't realize that at the time. Yeah. So, it's been a kind of a crazy ride, but I'm so glad that I did it.
Excellent. Clinton, what got you involved?
Well, I have to echo what Cheryl said. I never saw myself in politics, never really had a desire to be in politics, although I followed politics pretty closely. Never really saw myself as a politician. And something you said also, both of you, I've always been in a servant type of role. Just grew up in a family where we, you know, did things in the church, we did things in the community, different things at school volunteered for, and so that's always been something that's been a part of my life, is volunteering and serving other people. And so, when the role came open, that Cheryl was mentioning, the appointed role, when Chris Sterns left, there were a few folks that came and said, "Hey, have you thought about it?" And I was like, "No, I didn't even know there was a position open." And they were like, "You should..." And I was like, "I don't know if I got time for that." And they were like, "No, you should really consider it." And I was like, "Okay, I'll think about it." And so, I thought about it, and I talked it over with my family, and they were like, "Yeah, sure, go ahead." And then Cheryl got selected. I just went back to work, and I didn't think anything about it. And then some folks were like, "You should run for office." And I'm like, "No, not me."
You had a great interview, by the way.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And so, anyway, I made the decision to run. I think one of the things that was really, the cap for me, was after talking to several people that I really valued their opinions, and kind of bounced it off of them. My mom was one of the ones that really kind of had that, you know, "You can do it" type of speech with me, because I got through telling her about, "Well, I don't know if I can do this, and I don't know if I can do that, and I think I can do this." And she listened, and she just said, "Why not you?" And I was like, "Oh, well, I guess you got a point there."
Why is mom?
Why not? And I was like, "Okay." So, I felt like, you know, I could bring some value and learn some things as well, and I'm glad that I made that decision.
Me too. So, that leads me to my next question. It's kind of along the same lines, but what's your why? What motivates you to get up in the morning? What motivates you to read, as we recently had, a 5,000-page packet? Now, I will tell you that that is the biggest one that I ever remember, and I've been around since '03. So, congratulations on having that packet. And I wanted to say, no, we did not read every page of the 5,000 pages, because it was a culmination of a lot of different council meetings. And so, yes, the pages had been read. No, I don't, I think I can say with 100% certainty that no one read all 5,000 pages of that December 16th council meeting packet. Am I right?
You're correct.
I can only speak for me, I didn't. So, I don't know, maybe there's an avid reader on the council we don't know about, but...
We'll hear about it if they did. So, what is your why, then? Because there is a lot of work. People don't really know what goes into being a local elected. And I always say that more gets done at the local level than gets done at the county, state, or federal level. We are the closest to the people that we represent, and we are the ones that get stopped in the grocery store. I say that the grocery store is my second office, and sometimes I see more people there than will actually come to City Hall. But what motivates you? You know, we've all talked about servant, servanthood, but what is that motivation? What really, really gets you excited about serving? Cheryl?
I will say for me, and like you, I'm sure you'll feel the same way, that Auburn is my home. This is where I grew up. This is where my roots are.
Absolutely.
I will say that one time, I married somebody in the military and thought I was going to be able to travel, and I was so excited, I made it as far as McCord and divorcee. So, came right back to Auburn. So, this has been my life, and that motivates me. It motivates me to help the people that I grew up with, to hear from the people from Auburn, to go back to the roots where, you know, someone will ask me a history question, and I'd say, "Oh yeah, that happened then," or "This was there then," or that motivates me a lot. So, I really enjoy it when people do come to me and ask me certain questions. And just to serve your community, serve your people, I mean, anything more that you can do to help your hometown is fantastic.
Agreed. Clinton?
I just love people. My wife says all the time, it annoys her sometimes, she goes, "Everywhere we go, you talk to people, and people just gravitate to you." And you just, you just, I can't help it, I just love people. And so, I think that's one of my whys that I get up every day, is that not only do I love people and love serving, but in this particular role, it's an honor, because most people will never experience what we've experienced. One, running a campaign. Two, getting elected. And when you get elected, these are your neighbors, these are your friends, these are, for the two of you, people that you've grown up with and know, that say, "Man, we have enough trust in you that we believe that you would be someone who would be a good fit for this role." And that's a humbling experience, because, you know, anybody could have gotten voted in and elected, but they chose you.
Right.
And when I won, I told my mom, I was like, "Mom, I won." You know how you have that surreal moment, like, I actually, like, won?
Yes.
And it took a while to set in, and then, you know, from that point on, it was like, "Okay, now I have, I have to live up to, you know, the trust that my neighbors and my friends and my other community members have put in me, put that trust in me." And so, one of my biggest whys is that I don't want to let people down. And I really feel like if I couldn't have brought value to this role, and been a part of what this city is trying to do, and the growth that's happening, and just the hometown feel, it reminded me when I first moved here 13, 14 years ago, what really sold me on the town, because we looked at a lot of houses. I mean, we looked at a lot of houses. It was our first home that we bought in the state of Washington together, and it was just, I was like, told my wife, "This reminds me of where I grew up when I was a kid." Because my neighbors had cows in the yard, and the dogs were running around, and it was really quiet, and just beautiful and green, and I was like, "Yep, this is it, right? I don't need to see any more houses, I don't need to visit any more cities, this is it." And honestly, for me and my wife, knock on wood, it was the one town that we visited that we both agreed on, like, this is the place.
Nice.
And so, now for me, it's like, this is home. I don't see myself moving or going anywhere else. And for me, just knowing that, it's just a sense of pride, and like, okay, now, not only do I live here, but I'm a part of this community in a way that I never even imagined that I would be one day.
Very nice. I like that a lot. I don't have cows in my neighbors' yards.
They don't have them there anymore either.
But there is, there's just something about Auburn, and I'm the first one to admit, we are not without our bumps and bruises, right? No city is, but there's just something special about Auburn. I think there is still that small-town feel, Cheryl, that you and I grew up with, because we moved to Auburn in 19, February of 1968, is when we moved into the home that I grew up in. And the population was between 12,000 and 14,000 at the time. So, when you moved here in 1960, it was probably 9,000 to 10,000, maybe?
I was gonna say, I thought it was around 10.
Yeah. So, we are now, even though the Office of Financial Management said last year we were at 89,000, I know we're over 90,000, and I think when this year's numbers come in, we will certainly be over that. And we are well on our way to being a city of 100,000 people. That's significant. But we still have that small-town feel. We have some big-town issues.
Right.
Right? Just like our surrounding cities. I'm always amazed at people who think, and maybe it's because they live here, and they care about, they care about their home, of course, but thinking that Auburn is the only one with these problems. It's simply not so. It doesn't mean we don't do something about it. We still do, especially we do that, but we work in partnership to try and make those improvements, make the changes that need to be made. But you can walk down Main Street and probably see somebody that you know, or if it's somebody you don't know, either you're going to say hello to them, or they're going to say hello to you.
Absolutely.
And I, I don't want to lose that, right? It's not that everybody knows everybody. Used to be, but it's, it's, it's just that there is that sense of Auburn pride, and something about a small town still resonates with people. So, going back to a couple of the questions that we have, Cheryl, you've been on council for about two, two years now.
Yes.
Almost exactly two years. If you had to pick a favorite day or a favorite moment, what would it be and why?
I would actually say, right now is being voted in as Deputy Mayor. I'm excited about it, I'm excited to bring my leadership to it. It was, again, nothing that I would have ever thought that I would do. In fact, I think I even made the comment to you a couple times, I would never do that. But, you know, things change, and I'm excited about that.
Excellent. All right, so Clinton, as someone who just wrapped up a year on the council, I will pose the same question to you. What is your favorite day or favorite moment and why?
I think my favorite day and moment was when I got sworn in, because then it was real. Wish my parents would have been able to make it, but they couldn't. But, but folks were here, and I was, and then I saw, and I was surprised at the people that came out. I was like, "Wow, I didn't know there's many people that was gonna come out." And so, I think that was my favorite, well, I'd say that was my favorite moment. But my favorite day, I think, is when we all went together as a council, when I went on that first trip, when we all went together. That was my favorite day, because that was my first time, you know, going somewhere with council, and, ooh, we were all together.
To the National League of Cities.
Yeah, and it was like, this is kind of cool. So, it was like, okay, yeah, and you got it, you get a chance to see people in a little bit different light, when you're not in the chambers and hanging out, having dinner, and those kind of things. So, that was, that was one of my favorite days.
Was that National League of Cities or Association of Washington Cities?
Both.
Both, okay.
Both, yeah. I like, I kind of like hanging out with you guys sometimes. It was cool.
Kind of like hanging out with you guys, too. Just so people know, because there is the Open Public Meeting Act, we don't talk about city business when there is a quorum of the council together, and we do follow state law, and we notice a quorum at any event where all council members are going to be in attendance, or a majority of the council are going to be in attendance. But, but you're right, there is something very, very motivating about getting to know, getting to know each of you as an individual.
Right.
You know, I know your voting records, I know the passions you have for the city, the topics that you want to talk about, but to get to know the individual, I think it makes it easier for us to work together. I think it's really critical that I see you as an individual, you see me as an individual, as a person who has fears, who has joys, who has topics that are, that are a passion. And so, it, I think, helps us work together a little bit more. So, now that we've talked about good days, good moments, next question, and I know there, I know, I know there are these, and we try not to think about them too often, but how about a particularly tough or difficult day, and then what did you learn from it, if anything? Because sometimes you just don't learn anything from a difficult day, other than I made it through.
I want to go back one thing first. Clinton sparked something in my memory. I have to say, another good memory I had was when I got sworn in, and I looked out and I saw my junior high teacher.
Oh.
Jim Farrell. And I hadn't talked to him in years and years and years, and he said...
Yeah, Jim was there.
He says, "I have to come see my student get sworn in." So, that was a very proud moment. I would say my worst moment was when I ended up in the hospital after my last election, and I'm sitting...
It wasn't the election that caused it, just for the record.
Yeah, it wasn't the election. And I had to be sworn in at the hospital, because I wasn't going to be able to make it out to go to my swearing-in. And then I had people, as I'm sitting in the ER, really said, "Councilmember Rakes, can we talk about this?
Yeah.
Can we do this?" And I'm like, "Oh, I don't want to be seen, I don't want anybody to see me, I don't want this a big deal." And the doctors wanted to make it a big deal when they found out I was gonna be sworn in, and I'm like, "Please, no pictures, let's just get this done." And so, for me, I will have to say that probably...
I think that would rank right up there. I had forgotten about that, Cheryl, you're right.
That was probably my worst day.
Oh, Clinton.
I'm just thinking, like, I'm in a hospital, and people, like, I just couldn't be like a celebrity or movie star or something, because I like having my autonomy, and people just always coming up wanting autographs and jumping out of bushes, taking pictures of you and stuff, that would bother me, so...
Yeah.
Anyway, I don't know why I thought about that, but I don't, a tough day, I don't know if I had like a tough day, but there's been a stretch where I felt at times a little overwhelmed, just trying to learn like a lot of the lingo and...
Read those 5,000 pages.
And things are going fast, you know, and sometimes, you know, presentations are happening, and I'd be transparent, I'll say, "I've read the materials, and I'm kind of tracking." But sometimes, especially when you're dealing with numbers, and you're talking about projects that have already kind of been ongoing, or this project that we do want to do. So, I don't think I've had a tough day, I think I've had some days which I would like to think is normal for someone who's new to a, to a position, where I was at the end, like, that was a lot, and just had to exhale a little bit and take it in. And what I learned from it was that I don't have to try to get it all in one scoop.
No.
I can go back and, you know, take smaller scoops, smaller bites, and if I don't know, ask questions, and don't be afraid to ask questions. I think there's been times where I've been a little reluctant to ask questions, not that anybody made me feel like I couldn't, but, you know, sometimes you're just like, "Yeah, okay, all right." Like, man, that was, was I really, you know, but otherwise, I think it's just, it's been a normal process for someone who's new, and we came in hitting the ground running. And so, for me, it's just been trying to adjust to that. Yeah.
That's, yes, I will, I will agree. There's, there's a lot to learn, and I'm glad you don't feel like you can't ask those questions, because I will tell you that our, that our team, the staff, they are excited when you are interested in their topics, right? They have a passion for them, because that's why they're in the field of work that they're in. And some of those presentations and things can be very technical, and not as maybe exciting as an economic development presentation. But there is no less passion by the person presenting it.
Right.
And so, knowing that you are paying attention and trying to take it all in and ask questions, I think is really critical. You know, it's, it shouldn't be that you're challenging the individual that's doing the presentation, because they're in that role for a reason, right? I would say that we have some of the best people working for the city of Auburn, and I'm really proud of them. So, it's more asking questions to learn, not asking questions to challenge.
Right.
So, I, I love that. I will tell you one of, and it's, it's happened more than once, I have, I have learned to deal with it over the years, but this happened early on, and this was when the King County Public Health Clinic was supposed to be shut down, because King County had budget cuts, and they were going to shut down the Auburn Clinic. And there were, there were at least 11,000 clients, patients, at that clinic each year, and I knew that we couldn't have that clinic shut down. And so, I was working really, really hard. I mean, it was, it was a day-in, day-out process, trying to work with King County, trying to figure out where funding would come from, finding funding partners in the community that might help us keep that clinic open. And it was a particularly long day, and I got a phone call from a person in the community, and they were very unhappy. And at the end of the conversation, I could not, and I really, really try to make people happy, or at least understand, they may not like the answer, but make sure that they understand the answer before we are finished with our conversation. And this person screamed in my ear, "You just don't care," and hung up the phone. I had tears, I mean, I was sobbing. That is probably the worst thing you could tell me, is that I don't care. We don't do these jobs for the money, we don't do them for the glory, we don't do them for the fame, it's because we care about our community. And so, to have someone feel that that's how I was presenting was just probably one of the worst things that I could have happen. So, that's one of my worst moments. I've gotten a little better about it over time, and it's, I know that I care.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry you feel that way, I will try and do better, but I don't have the same tears coming down as, as I did when, when that happened in the early days. So, how about other leaders? Are there any that you particularly look up to or admire? Clinton, any in, in your line of sight?
Not, not any like, big-name type of person or anything come to mind like that. I just, I've always admired strong leaders. And I don't mean dominating people, people that, you know, I mean, leaders like, that people would go the extra mile for, people that, people just loved them as a person, but they were really good, strong leaders. And so, I've had, you know, several folks over the years, I've had pastors that I admired a lot and thought were great leaders, I've had individuals in my family that I've looked up to and saw as great leaders in our family, as well as in the community. And then there's been other executives, because of the work that I do, I get to, you know, kind of mix and mingle with various executives at different levels, and there's been a few that I've said, "Man, if I could be half the leader that that person is, I would be doing great." And so, I don't have a particular person, I just, I just really appreciate really good, strong leadership on all levels, right? Whether that's a, you know, whatever their role is, because it's tough being a leader. And as you alluded to, people always see one side of it, and they don't see the leader's heart, they don't see the leader's passion or compassion. And so, sometimes you get the blunt end of what they think they know.
Right.
As opposed to what it really is. So, I really just appreciate just genuine, just good leadership in general. Yeah.
Cheryl, how about you?
You know, I would have to say John F. Kennedy. I was just talking to somebody the other day that I went to school with, that owns property here downtown, and he went to grade school with me at Washington Elementary. And we were talking about the day he got assassinated, and we both remembered it a little bit different, but we had the same teacher, and she cried and cried and cried when they announced it. And the impact that it had on us kids, like, "Oh, wow, the president's really important." You know, because you don't have that when you're in second grade, and, and what it impacted... You know, because you don't have that when you're in second grade and um, and what an impact that made on us growing up. So I would have to say that, that incidence.
Okay, so Cheryl, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull one out of the running for you cause I, I know what it is, but uh, what's your favorite place, cafe, brewery, restaurant or store in Auburn and why? And you can't say, you can't say rail hopping because your kids own that, your son-in-law and daughter. So removing that from the list, what's your favorite?
I would say the Rainbow Cafe.
Okay.
Just because of the history, they've been there ninety-two years. Um, I remember even as a kid, we would always go to the Rainbow for breakfast before the Veterans Day parade because then you could get parking.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And so I carried that tradition on with my kids. And so um, the history there, um, when it was owned by Everlines and my dad was involved in the Black Watch, he used to go in there and help Jim cook his turkeys cause they were all fresh all the time. And so um, for me, it's the history and I'd have to say the Rainbow Cafe.
I have a lot of fond memories of the Rainbow Cafe as, as well, the Bow. And gov, former governor Christine Gregoire grew up in Auburn.
Right.
Graduated from Auburn High School and used to sit in one of the booths and do her homework. And I believe it was her grandmother perhaps that did all of those huge cinnamon rolls and pastries.
They were huge.
Clinton, these cinnamon rolls were like as big as your face.
Now you're talking my language.
Oh my gosh, they were incredible. And I think that was her grandmother that, that did that. Maybe I'm wrong, but but she definitely has a real connection to the Rainbow. I I told her after we had had the anniversary for the Rainbow, I, I saw her just a few days later and told her about that. And she was just so excited and had a smile on her face because like you and I, we have some wonderful memories there. I used to uh, date a young man when I was in high school whose parents would go down there every Saturday night for the prime rib. You could get the prime rib, uh, a baked potato, vegetable roll and dessert, I think for nine ninety-nine.
What?
Oh, yeah. And it was the bomb.
That sounds like a feast.
Oh, it was a feast and you could get a cowboy cut.
Yes.
For a dollar or two more, I remember. But oh, we would go down there on, on Saturday nights and they would have their own table. And uh, it was always waiting for them and we would sit there and uh, it was the best. So I have a lot of great memories there too. Clinton, what's yours?
Bring back the good old days.
Bring back the good old days. Some things about the good old days.
Um, I try to support a variety of different businesses in town. Um, but I would probably say the Outlet Mall.
Ah, the Outlet Collection.
Yeah, I do a little bit more shopping than I probably should. Um, got a couple of stores in there that I, that I visit pretty regularly. Um.
Do they know your name when you walk in?
I don't know if they know my name, but they know my face. Hey, we got something. I, I, one of the stores I really like is um, I shamefully, I visit that store at least once, twice a week, probably, yeah, at least. Uh, the Skechers Store.
Oh, yeah.
Um, cause at my age now, my feet just need comfort. Anything that just really likes just snuggles up to my feet. I'm like, in Skechers, they just,
They give you a hug.
They just give me a hug. And then, you know, there's the food court in there and it's like, I could come in here and just stay for hours and forget I had somewhere else to be. So I would say it was the Collection Mall, Outlet Mall.
And you know that that was recently sold.
No, I didn't.
It was, it was sold. And so the new owners are going to do about ten million dollars in, in renovations. So I'm looking forward to seeing that. And, and I love the mall as well, the Outlet Collection and they are questioning whether the name is the right name for it. So one never knows. I, I can't say anything more than that, but we never know. It could have a name change. It could stay the same, but uh, stay tuned for that. And so New Year's Day was a week ago, a little over a week. Yeah, today's the sixth, so less than a week ago. I'm losing track of time already in twenty twenty-five. So what are you looking forward to most this year? Clinton, what are you looking forward to the most?
Uh, that's a good question.
Thank you.
I think I'm looking forward to just trying to get a little bit more work-life balance. Um, looking forward to spending more time with my family, which means I would have to take some more stuff off my plate, which is fine. Um, and just continuing to just grow as a person in different, different areas of my life, on the council and in my church and, you know, just different phases of my life. Um, so I'm really excited about some things that I personally have coming up. Um, looking forward to getting back in the gym and trying to, you know, get my health under control and just a few different things. Yeah.
Okay, those are good. Cheryl, what about you?
I would say too, the work balance. Um, it was a very busy year for me this year. Um, and thank God I have a wonderful board downtown and they're taking over a bunch of stuff to ease up for me a little bit. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that goes. Um, just stepping into my role as deputy mayor, trying to get some things done, maybe um, bring more things to council um, that the council wants to get done. So yeah.
Well, if either one of you figure out that work-life balance, I want you to give me a call as soon as you do.
Yeah.
Because that is a challenge. Uh, if you really care about the job that you are doing and council is not a full-time job, but you can make it into a full-time job. So being mayor is considered a full-time job plus. But if you have, if you figure out that work-life balance, I want you to give me a call first. Okay, cause I need the advice.
Yeah.
Cause I haven't figured it out yet either.
No, when you have a passion for your work, it can kind of consume you at times.
Yeah, I'm a bit of a workaholic, I have to admit. I mean, I'm always doing something and I just need to get a little more balance with that. I mean,
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my wife would agree.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure my husband would. Well, I know my husband would agree.
My husband, I have to say, is pretty good. He just says, do your thing.
Nice.
Oh, nice.
My husband has done that over the years. I, I jokingly said one time, I don't know if he has finally come to the realization or he just doesn't care anymore. He's a good man. He's very supportive.
Yes.
All right. So I've asked you both a lot of questions today. Do you have any questions for me before we wrap up?
Well, I guess I would, Cheryl, I mean.
I'm just curious what your ambitions are for two thousand twenty-five. Do you have any specific ambitions?
Oh, well, we have a lot going on in the city. I'm really excited to get the theater rebuilt underway. Uh, that will go out for bid this year. So I'm really excited by what's going to happen downtown and bringing people back. I, I also have made a commitment that during twenty twenty-five, this summer, we are going to close down part of Main Street on Friday nights. We haven't figured out if it's every Friday during the summer, every other week, one week, one Friday a month. But we are going to close down Main Street, bring in food trucks, hopefully bring in some bands, some vendors and the Adirondack chairs and the fire pits that we have and just have a good time downtown. Hopefully that will, and, and the, the theater obviously won't be built yet, but I want to get people used to coming back downtown again, right? It's, it's been a while since the two fires. It's really been a challenge downtown with, with businesses. And there's some vacant storefronts that I would really love to see filled, but giving people a reason to come back downtown again and start to get that muscle memory of coming back downtown because there are things going on. And when the theater opens, it's just gonna, everything is just going to take off. So I'm, I'm, that's what I'm most excited about. And continuing to work with the council because we, we will have a full agenda this year. Finding out what council priorities are, how those, how those intertwine with what our directors and I have come up with. So I'm looking forward to that.
That was my question. That's pretty much the same question. Yeah.
We have a lot of work in front of us. There is never, there is never a day where there's not something to do. Right? Uh, an issue to be solved, uh, a fun project to be thought up. We have a legislative session that starts in the next week or two. This is a big year. As you've heard at the state level, they say that they have a spending deficit. So what does that mean at the local level, right? Because there are some shared revenues that whenever the state has revenue issues, they tend to pull that money back from the, from the cities. So I'm hopeful that we don't have that revenue taken from us because revenue, I am really proud of our city and thankful to the council. We have a, a balanced meaningful budget. We did not have to do cuts. There are some cities around us that have had to do layoffs. I am really thankful that we have a finance department and directors in all of the other departments who are fiscally responsible and that council recognized that and approved a, a solid, balanced budget. So I'm, I'm excited to work on the issues, on the items that are in that budget as well and finish out twenty twenty-five strong in a year that we can all be proud of.
You're here.
So thank you both for being here today. Cheryl, Clinton, uh, I know this is not part of your work-life balance, being here after five o'clock to record this. And I think our listeners will really appreciate hearing from you. They may see you on, on camera. They may see you at an event. But hopefully they get to know you a little bit better by having this conversation today. So thank you very much. Is there anything else either of you would like to share, say before we sign off?
I think I want to end with a positive note. Um, you brought up bringing people downtown, um, like it used to be. And I was very proud of our downtown, um, even though the fires were devastating.
Yes.
The amount of work that the businesses worked together, um, to find them new locations. And it was totally like a family atmosphere.
Couldn't agree with you more.
And I think that's a positive that came out of that.
I would, I've, and because we had two huge fires within just a couple of years. And by the way, for those who, I did not start either one of those fires. I was accused of that. Believe it or not, on social media, I was accused of being responsible for those fires because I wanted to see downtown rebuilt.
Right.
For this thing from the truth, obviously, but uh, out of the ashes comes something amazing. And I think that's what we are going to see downtown.
Right.
Clinton?
Together we can go further.
There you go. That's, that is one of my favorite sayings. It's an African proverb. If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. I think that is a great way to end today's podcast. Thank you so much. Thanks for joining us on That's So Auburn.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.